Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We are calling to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Schaefer will lead us in prayer, then will be led by Commissioner Sandlin in the pledge to the flag.
Yesterday morning, I had the privilege of being able to go out to Franklin Road Baptist Church, and they had a patriotic day, and it was honoring those that have served their country in one capacity or another. And it just gave me some time to reflect, and I thought I'd just share a couple of thoughts with you before we close with prayer. Thomas Jefferson wrote 235 years ago, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." And on November 19th, 1863, Abraham Lincoln said at Gettysburg, "Four score and seven years ago, our fathers brought forth on this continent a new nation conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal, and that this nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom, and that government of the people, by the people, and for the people shall not perish on this earth." In a song that was written by a Tennessean says, "I am proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me, and I'll gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, 'cause there ain't no doubt I love this land.'" God bless the USA. Let us pray for our nation. Gracious and loving God, we come to you in humble prayer for the United States of America. Bless our President; give him wisdom and strength to serve the American people and lead our country in ways that are pleasing to you. Bless our Congress, instill in them knowledge and understanding to enact laws that protect the sanctity of life from the unborn to the elderly, and promote the good of all people. Bless the people of the United States; make us aware of our responsibility as citizens to uphold the principles of life, liberty, justice, and equality. Send your Holy Spirit upon our beloved country; make us people of faith in time of uncertainty; make us people of hope in times of trouble; make us people of compassion with those who are less fortunate; make us people of peace in our homes, our communities, our country, and the world. We ask this through Jesus Christ our Savior. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggins.
Commissioner Young.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Sireno.
Here.
Twenty present.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Okay, we do have next on the agenda the reading and approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion concerning that?
We are not moved if that be approved or failed.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second from Commissioner Turner? Did anyone have any corrections or additions? All in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We have a resolution of sympathy on behalf of James Robert Ward, and Commissioner P will present that.
It seems like it's always an honor to be able to give the resolution of sympathy, and especially is an honor for this man who was a family friend for many years. James Robert served on the county commission with my father quite a few years ago. Whereas it was with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of former county commissioner James Robert Ward, a friend of many. And whereas Mr. Ward was married to Evelyn Ward and had two sons, Robert Eddie Ward and Howard Harris Ward, a daughter-in-law, Arden Ward, and two grandchildren and several great-grandchildren. And whereas Mr. Ward served as a Rutherford County Commissioner from 1966 to 1986. And whereas Mr. Ward was a retired employee of South Central Bell, and after retirement he enjoyed farming and activities in the Lascasses community. And whereas he was a member of the Church of Christ of Lascasses. And whereas we know that his passing has caused great sadness to his family and friends. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this 27th day of June 2011 does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of James Robert Ward. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Mr. Ward by the clerk of this legislative body, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second by Commissioner Black. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. P. That was unanimous, and we do respect the great service of Mr. Ward. Now we're going to call on Commissioner Ely for a special presentation.
I would like to ask our county finance director, Mrs. Nolan, to join me at the podium.
And our deputy finance director, yes, by all means. This is a notable achievement for Mrs. Nolan and her staff, and I would also call attention to the fact that Mrs. Nolan also is continuing the legacy of previous finance directors, and that is evidenced by the fact if you go into the finance office, you will see a display of these plaques for each year going back to 1995. Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting presented to Rutherford County, Tennessee for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2010. A certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting is presented by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada to government units and public employee retirement systems whose comprehensive annual financial reports achieve the highest standards in government accounting and financial reporting. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I will say that all this, all the financial reporting cannot be done by one person. I mean, it takes everybody, and so it's not just the finance staff at the county, but it's also the finance staff at the school board and at the highway department. So it takes all of us to pull this thing together, so I accept this on their behalf.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Nolan. We are, all of us, do very, very much appreciate your service and your leadership and your professionalism, and you've made my job in particular very, very, much easier. And the success of what you as the Board of Commissioners have been able to accomplish is, we can give a lot of tribute and thanks to her staff and to her for her leadership, so we do appreciate that. Okay, there are no public comments to be made today. Therefore, next we have elections and confirmations, and we'll call on Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Before you, have a list of this month's notaries, and I also have an addition to make to that. It was a late addition to the list, and that applicant is Vicky West, and I move for their approval, including Ms. West.
And a second from Commissioner Sireno. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
We also need to confirm the appointment of a judicial commissioner, Ms. Misty Waddell, and I move for her approval.
And a second from Commissioner Sandlin. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We also need to confirm the reappointment of Richie Boland, Mike Kush, Mike Vaughn to the Regional Planning Commission. I move for their approval.
And second, Commissioner Jordan. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We also need to confirm the reappointment of Susan Boni and Donnie Hester to the Insurance and Benefits Committee, and I move for their approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. There is no unfinished business, and now we will start on the reports by standing committees. We do have a Purchasing Committee monthly report. Do we have a motion concerning that report? Mrs. Cook, motion to approve that? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Schaefer, any discussion? All in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now we again will call on Mrs. Ely to make the report for the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee.
Item K-2A, the 2010-2011 General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Emergency management, we will recognize increased revenue from the 2010 Homeland Security Grant, $9,754. Increased expenditures, other equipment, $9,754. Pet adoption and welfare services from PAWS, committed for public health and welfare, $60,000; to building improvements to complete the surgical space, $60,000. Unemployment compensation from Sheriff's Department, unemployment compensation, $1,720; to Election Commission, unemployment compensation, $120. PAWS unemployment compensation, $1,600. Hotel motel tax, Stones River Greenway Chamber of Commerce, to increase, excuse me, to recognize increase in revenue from the hotel motel tax, $65,000. Increased expenditures, parks and fare boards and contributions, $6,500. Tourism and contributions, $19,500. An increase to unassigned fund balance of $39,000. Resolved this 27th day of June 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Any discussion on this? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, one abstained. Motion passes.
May I change? I did not have my, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Let the record reflect that Ms. Ely did not have hers. Turner, do you want to go turn that on now, Ms. Ely, or is it, it's on now? All right, thank you.
Item K-2B, the general purpose school fund budget amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general purpose school fund be amended as follows. Contributions to alternative instruction, increased revenue, contributions, and gifts of $5,000. This was a donation to Smyrna West Alternative School. Increased expenditures, other equipment for computer expenditures, $5,000. Resolved this 27th day of June 2011. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Recognize Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you. Did I second that? Was I the second?
You seconded.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I wanted the Health and Committee to know, this is, and the commission, this is one of those items that comes up between our last meeting and budget and this meeting, and so did not go through the Health and Committee. It is completely routine. I urge its passage, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K-2C, a resolution authorizing professional services contract with LR Kimball for the provision of telecommunications and related technology services. Whereas the communications operations at the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department needs to be upgraded, and whereas it is being proposed to enter into a professional services contract with LR Kimball at a cost of $17,366 to provide telecommunications and related technology services to develop specifications that will be used with the request for proposal for the communications center. Whereas the Emergency Communications Board has approved a grant of $215,000 to provide funding to purchase equipment for the communications center, which will provide compatibility and backup services for the emergency agencies. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute a professional services contract with LR Kimball, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, at a cost of $17,366 to provide consulting services in developing specifications for a communications center at the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner Coggan and others. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K-2D, a resolution authorizing the 2011 Byrne Memorial Justice Grant application and inter-local agreement with the city of Murfreesboro. Whereas the city of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County have been informed by the Department of Justice of their eligibility to receive a joint award of $75,865 from a federal grant program called the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, with the city of Murfreesboro to receive $37,933, and Rutherford County to receive $37,932. And whereas to receive the award, the program requires that the application be filed jointly between county and city, and an inter-local agreement be executed between the two entities, agreeing upon the amount of funds each is to receive, and which agency will file the application on behalf of both entities. And whereas it is being proposed that the city of Murfreesboro be designated as the fiscal agent to file the application on behalf of both entities, request the drawdown of funds, and pass the agreed-upon portion of the funds on to Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials be authorized to enter into the inter-local agreement with the city of Murfreesboro, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, designating the city of Murfreesboro as the fiscal agent to apply for the 2011 Byrne Justice Assistance Grant on behalf of Rutherford County, with the share being $37,933 applied to the city of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County to receive the sum of Additionally, that the county mayor also be authorized to accept the grant subject to its being awarded. Resolved this 27th day of June 2011. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Any discussion on this? Okay, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K-2E, a resolution authorizing dead stock removal service agreement. Whereas Rutherford County desires to enter into a service agreement with Appertain Corporation, South Central Tennessee Development District, for removal and disposal services for all dead livestock within the county for a term of 12 months commencing on July 1, 2011, at a cost of $33,007.52. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute a service agreement with Appertain Corporation, South Central Tennessee Development District, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for removal and disposal services for all dead livestock within the county for a term of 12 months commencing on July 1, 2011. And I would also remind a member of our budget committee, there was a question about deer being picked up, and yes, that is included in the contract, a specific address must be given for that service. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner P and Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K-2F, a resolution authorizing the tax levy for fiscal year 2011-2012. Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, assembled in regular session on the 27th day of June 2011, that the combined property tax rate for Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2011, shall be $2.4652 on each $100 of taxable property, which is to provide revenue for each of the following funds, and otherwise conform to the following levies. For the county general, $0.58. Ambulance service fund, $0.82. Highway fund, $1.40. General purpose schools, $1.143. Education capital projects fund, $4.51. And debt service, $0.592, for a total of $2.4652. Notice in Section 2, it explains how the business tax is distributed. Section 3 details our county's sidest portion of sales tax revenue and how it will be divided. Solid waste sanitation fund, 60 percent. General fund, 20 percent. Road and bridge, 20 percent. Section 4, the wheel tax revenue will be divided as follows. General fund, 30 percent. Road and bridge fund, 30 percent. General purpose school fund, 40 percent. Section 5, the development tax revenue is divided as follows. General fund, 50 percent. General debt service fund, 50 percent. And Section 6, interest earned on idle operating balances will be distributed as follows. General fund, 55 percent. General purpose school fund, 25 percent. Road and bridge fund, 5 percent, with the balance to the general debt service. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the tax levy for fiscal year 2011-2012.
Second, Commissioner Sireno. Any question or discussion? Commissioner Jernigan.
I'd like to make a statement here. Because I'm an employee of Rutherford County Highway Department, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my constituents and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me. Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes, sir. Because I'm an employee of Rutherford County, I have a conflict of interest in a proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens of this county which this body represents.
Commissioner Ely.
Thank you. Because I am a retiree from the Board of Education, and I do participate in the insurance program, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
And Commissioner P.
Because my wife is an employee of Rutherford County School Board, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
And Commissioner Tiffany Jones, Phillips.
Because I'm an employee of Rutherford County, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
Commissioner Black.
Because my wife is an employee of the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answers only to my constituents and to my obligations and the citizens of this body represents.
Anyone else wishing to speak? We do have a motion and a second on the floor. We're ready to vote, then. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K-2G, a resolution authorizing appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Rutherford County for the fiscal year 2011-2012. Be it resolved by Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, on the 27th day of June 2011, that the amounts hereafter set out are hereby appropriated for the purpose of meeting the expenses of various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the capital outlay and for the meeting, the payment of principal and interest on the county's debt maturing during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2011, and ending June 30, 2012, according to the following schedule. General fund, $73,535,831. Rutherford County Economic Development, $244,510. Solid waste sanitation fund, $3,677,551. Ambulance service fund, $10,687,49. Special purpose fund, this is also known as the asset forfeiture fund, $20,087. Drug control fund, $760,712. Highway fund, $9,329,445. General purpose school fund, $266,904,44. Central cafeteria fund, $15,696,600. Education capital projects fund, $2,423,64. Debt service fund, $61,452,413. And the details of how the appropriations will also be distributed. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the appropriations resolution.
And do we have a second on that? Commissioner Schaefer. Now Commissioner Jernigan.
I'll add the same statement to this vote I made a while ago.
Well, if they'll just reaffirm that that's what you're doing, then to make it clear to all of us, you won't have to read it all again, but those of you that read the previous statement, if you will reaffirm that you're going to need to make the same statement in. Commissioner Schaefer.
I reaffirm the previous statement that I made.
And Commissioner Black.
I reaffirm this previous statement.
Commissioner P.
I also reaffirm.
Commissioner Phillips.
I reaffirm my previous statement.
And I believe that was everyone. Commissioner Ely. Commissioner Ely.
I reaffirm my conflict of interest statement. You need to.
Commissioner Srinio.
Yes, sir. Because I'm retired from the Rutherford County School System of Rutherford County School Department, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about the vote. However, I dedicate, you know, to the management and motivate the answer of any conscience that attend the constitution into the vote to propose.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion or questions or statements? If not, we do have a motion, and we do have a second. We're ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Eighteen yes, two no. Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you very much. There's no report from any of the other standing committees. Is there any other business anyone wants to bring before this body? There being no other business, we appreciate everything you've done, your very serious approach to this whole budget process and your professionalism, and thank you very much. And we are adjourned.